In the bank, it's just a matter of leverage, even with insurance companies.
That would, that's my question, is kind of the elephant in the room then, I mean, is it a if or is it a when question? That, you know, Payne, Payne, Payneville, Payneville area health, you know, Centricare, you know, all, you know, Renville. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you know, is there, is there a date on, when this business model is obsolete? And, and we go to look to market the hospital, I mean, I think that question is just something, has to be asked.
There's.
Because of all the things we talked about.
Yeah, there's a lot of different scenarios.
You know, I mean, those types.
That we can look at that can, you know, that could be beneficial. And I think it's, it's one of them that I've always told Beth, I do not believe the hospital should ever be a burden on the county. It should never be a burden, because then you're taking away from security and you're taking away from the other things that the county needs to do. It should never be a burden on the county. So what were the other alternatives? Is it a matter of when? I believe it's to be a matter of when, not then. And I'm also wanting that if we're to look at that, I'd rather do it when we're still here.
Yes.
I want to operate from strength and not business.
Yeah, I agree.
You see the consolidation being, I can see where the cost savings in, but then you eliminate the actually competition part of the factor. Because then, you know, Centricare basically has the whole area then. And, I mean, I don't know how the prices difference between you guys and Centricare, I mean, I'll be honest, most, we usually go to St. Clouds. It's a little, they have more opportunities, if you will.
And I think that's one of the things that through COVID, what they've identified is they can't be the keeper of all anymore. They need the rural, they need to be able to, because if they're flooded with a pandemic of COVID and they're shutting surgeries down and they're shutting clinics down to shift for that, they need to be able to still see patients. To have telehealth out in rural areas like us and be able to shift that out to us because we can, we can take care of that. They're fit, they found out that during this, they need the rural more than they thought in the past. And in that, in the last three months, they created what is called Rural Health Division. They created a whole separate department for that, just because they have realized that when they're sitting with their beds full and some things that probably could have and should have stayed out here, they needed to say, we needed to have, pay a little bit more attention. So they created that rural division the last two months. And I think part of it is because of the relationship that we had with us, with this collaboration agreement. They have found out that it has worked in some cases and in some cases it hasn't worked. And so I think that's part of it is creating this to say, okay, we need to pay a little bit bigger attention on the rural.
When you guys are comparing though, say, I mean, it's hard, you can't even price shop in terms of any procedures, period. Yeah.
For us.
No, no, I mean, for individual, it's just like impossible. But do you feel like if Meeker goes the Centricare way, is that going to hurt the county citizens in terms of like, okay, no longer do you have any competition in terms of you're offering maybe a more cost friendly in Meeker County versus Centricare? Because soon as Centricare gobbles something up, it's not suddenly they're going to reduce their costs. Even though it does reduce the hospital's costs, they're just going to have more margin.
I would say, I mean.
I mean, I don't know, maybe I'm just speaking of just.
There, there are studies out there that, that will say that, that by coming to a larger system doesn't necessarily decrease cost to the patient. You know, I can probably say, I don't know for sure, but, you know, from what we hear through our feedback from our patients is we're probably a little higher cost than some of the area around us. And we haven't done a price increase in our charges for three years since I've been here.
They did it a lot. I, I remember when they did one and it's longer than three years.
So, I mean, we've been trying to maintain that because it, it, we have, we have been told by the patients that come that our costs are higher. We've been told by Blue Cross Blue Shield that our costs are higher.
They're an annual fight.
And that's an annual fight. I mean, they, they will direct patients to other places because it's cheaper.
From a, from a critical access peer standpoint, we're pretty on mark with pricing. But it is when you start to look at those systems or CDI where they do that, that more.
Focused.
Yeah, focused procedures that they do have the cost savings, so they pass that along to them.
See, and essentially you're saying if they do, you guys do go to Centricare route, it actually will be more of a benefit to the people who actually use hospitals.
I think from a, from a cost standpoint, I think it would, I'm not, I.
You're not speculating.
We haven't done that yet, yeah.
I think from a service standpoint, from in terms of through telehealth and, and specials and stuff like that, I think that will increase. So I think trying to keep more things local is, is a key. You know, and right now, you know, if you look at, we check where our referrals go out of this county. And eighty, eighty-five percent go up to St. Cloud. Not many go to the cities. And in the year that they've had in the cities, we've even had times where our, our ambulance wouldn't go to the cities. They have refused to take patients there because of uncertainty of going to the cities. So we've been stuck with, well, either holding them in our ER or we get them to Centricare.
And I think we've had a good partnership with Centricare.
Absolutely.
Overall, and there's more we can do, we can do a fuller management contract with them. And, and I'm going to say that we did a lot of work, particularly Kurt and Nicole did about where to go. We've got the dialysis, but there's other places. This just made sense geographically with the age of our people and driving.
Driving.
Is much easier.
And I didn't want to extend this conversation too late.
No, no.
No, but I just thought it was pertinent and you were in and I was like, you know.
It's, those are great questions, because I think that's what gets everybody kind of thinking and looking at it. And, and it's something that, like I said, you know, I've been here over two years and it's something that, you know, I'm trying to think three to five years down the road, you know, and, you know, handle today's operation. But I gotta, you know, we gotta be prepared for three to five years down the road. And three to five years down the road in healthcare is changing. I think COVID has looked at that. Now, there's no boundaries right now in licensing of people within Minnesota, the, the emergency orders are there. So through telehealth, anybody now can see through telehealth through your phone, anybody can do those visits right now. Not just Meeker. It can be health partners, it can be someplace out of state, it can be whatever, and they're taking business away. You know, I mean.
I wonder how many people use that. I think more than we know, maybe.
Probably more than, no, this is convenient. You know, you get an earache of a kid, this is fifty-nine bucks, you know, thirty-nine dollars.
I mean, I, I agree, I, that, I'll be honest, it might hurt the hospital's bottom line, but really, some of these things are probably good things in a way, you know.
It, it is, and, and we, but we got to play in that arena.
Right, exactly.
And that takes, that takes infrastructure and money.
One quick question, and I want to allude to something that Beth said before, when that time comes.
Yep.
As you said, Beth had indicated you make deals for our local folks to help them reduce the cost and pay. Do you think the bigger outfits are going to do that?
Yes and no. I think part of them is they're, they're getting forced to. So part of, you know, we have the option of being part of what's called an ACO, accountable care organization. Part of being part of an accountable care organization is reducing costs. Medicare, you partner with Medicare and you increase your quality and you decrease your cost. That's the whole purpose of ACOs, okay? It, there comes a time to where after three years, you have to take risk, which means Medicare is doing that right now. So if they reduce their risk or improve their qualities, reduce their cost, right now, I think Joe Pelley made a comment, it, it can be significant millions of dollars, you know, thirty, forty million dollars that they can get in it. However, if you don't hit what Medicare is telling you, they'll pay back twenty million dollars. So, you know, part of an ACO is exactly that, it is increasing your quality, decreasing your cost. And, you know, we, part of that with Caravan, which is a group of worlds across the nation as part of it. We got out of it this year, Dassel was the only one that was in it because they won't allow us to have the three-year buy-in with our new clinics. They would have had, we would have had to share risk right away without them being participating in that. We had to back out of that because that placed organization at risk of paying money in when we didn't have the infrastructure to build on this. So we had to pull out now. I would say that we'll be forced again through Medicare probably in two years to probably have to pick and be a part of an ACO. So Centricare is part of that ACO right now, part of an ACO, so they have a risk in there. They have to increase, you know, their quality, decrease cost. And otherwise you're at risk.
And the subject for another day, I was at a call for another day, because we're way behind in quality improvement that have to be made. And the doctors have a lot on their shoulders that in the end, you can get marked down for, for quality and really it's in the patient. Like you cannot make a patient take personal responsibility. So you can tell a diabetic, correct me if I'm wrong, you can't eat sugar and you need to diet, you need to exercise, and they don't. Then that goes against you when you have no control. Then that goes against you when you have no control of what that patient does when they walk out the door.
We get penalized with a reverse.
So, so it's a very, I think a seminar would be a very interesting thing because there's so, I've learned so much over the last few years that I. And especially since Curtis come, I, he's much more transparent about things. There's just a lot to this and so, yeah.
As a nonprofit, can you carry over funds from year to year?
Absolutely.
Or is it a use it or lose it?
No, you can carry funds over.
And if there are a lot of additional funds, it's been a good year, are those funds divvied out? Or are they kept for the next year? Like are, do they go out in bonuses? Do they go out in?
Um, you know, we, we, we look at, we, we're just starting to do market analysis for our staff. Okay, in the past, we haven't really done too much in terms of a market analysis. Uh, we're doing market analysis right now. Um, and we're comparing what our staff is getting, uh, versus other hospitals our size and our region, everything like that. Um, I can tell you that the initial, um. Initial feedback I'm getting there is significant, I mean, significant.
In certain areas.
That we are down within market.
But not all areas, just certain.
Not all areas, just certain areas. Um, and, and, yeah, if, if I had to guess, it's gonna be a half a million dollars.
So if you're gonna get people, you need.
And, you know, and, um, so I mean, and right now with COVID, with the, you know, supply and demand. Um, on that, um, it has increased, um, the need in cost.
I think it would be interesting to set up something at the hospital and maybe for all of us.
Absolutely.
Cause I think these are interesting questions.
No, I think it's, I think it's, uh, I think we would like to, uh, we'd like to host a lunch and we can do that. I'll work with Andrew and we can kinda get something going on your guys' calendars and, uh. And we can do a hospital one-on-one, cause I think it's.
It's not hospital food though, is it?
Our, our hospital food, our hospital food is fantastic.
Okay, okay.
He had, he had me up there for a lunch to, to show me everything when I first went, I had a great meal there.
Yeah, our, our hospital food is fantastic.
Typically it's kinda goes the opposite way. Well, gain weight and you actually.
The reason why, the reason why I had to, uh, I had to go on a diet because of our hospital food.
I was thinking the same thing.
I gained, I gained about thirty pounds. So, I appreciate the, I appreciate the, the questions because I think that. Understanding healthcare, um, and, and all the complexities is, is, is huge for you guys. I think it's, it's, I, I appreciate the questions. I think, uh, I, I enjoy them, so.
And we're on, we're on quite a learning curve here.
Yep, absolutely.
That would be very nice.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, thanks very much.
Well, we're only an hour behind.
Way to go Danny.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Danny.
We're gonna have to wrap things up, alright? Time to wrap it up a few things.
Well, then we'll be really quick.
Don't pressure anything.
Well, next on our agenda is Paul, and I was informed he wouldn't be here, but we have the ladies.
I'm Pam Thomas, I'm a supervisor for adult mental health.
And Tina Shing, I'm the supervisor for the children's mental health program. Um, so we will try, in fact, we were arguing over who had to talk today. So we will do our best to be brief. We do have some just things prepared, but feel free to ask any questions. Um, it was interesting hearing the hospital talk about, um, they were expecting a V and they're getting this. Um, we're, we are seeing the V, um, I think is what our numbers that we pulled yesterday will show. So currently with the adult mental health caseload, um, we have current caseload of ninety-three. Um, our intakes, the year-to-date from yesterday was thirty-six, so that's maybe about on track. You've got about a third of that. Um, caseload coming in through our intake system for this year. Um, for our children's mental health, we have a current caseload of about fifty. Um, our intakes, our year-to-date intakes are thirty-two. So, and a lot of those, to be honest, haven't been processed yet, they're, we need some information to, from the providers to be able to qualify them for that service, so. We're gonna be, um, taking a huge uptick, um, in the next couple of weeks with those numbers. Um, do you want to talk about the?
Our commitments, so the involuntary hospitalizations for individuals that have significant mental health issues. Um, are up. Um, in, as of yesterday, um, we had ten for this year. In twenty-twenty, we had nineteen total. So we're over half and we're only at the first part of May. Um, in two thousand and nineteen, we only had fourteen. So for some of our surrounding counties, those are smaller numbers, but those counties are also larger than we are. And Bill's numbers, um, usually are a little lower than what ours are. Um, so we're seeing that, that increase, um, in our commitments.
Which are really time-consuming and costly, so that's.
And they're very time-sensitive.
Yes.
So it requires a couple of staff people having to drop everything else and address the commitment, so.
And I'm assuming that involves county attorney, um, court.
County attorney, law enforcement, our court system, um, so all four of our agencies have to work together. Um, very quickly, um, to get these things processed as well as any other medical provider that the individual.
Are those, I don't know if you can answer this, are those levy dollars that are used for, that actual levy dollars used for that? Do you know, Andrew?
I, I've got my head around it.
Well, do you, for what?
And now the out-of, out-of-home placements are levy dollars, so we're not federally funded or grants, right?
Oh, I, I think, so only the hold order piece tends, so, um, usually.
Usually those fun, you know, those hospital stays are paid for through.
Medicaid.
Medicaid or an insurance carrier.
Okay.
Um, the only time they're not is if there is some determination that a person.
So it's different from the out-of-home placements, is it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's possible that we have some obligation, but it's not likely, yeah. Um, so speaking of out-of-home placements, um, youth in residential placement for treatment, so not youth that have come into our system through like a child protection matter. But youth that are in, um, in a, in a treatment center because of their mental health. Um, just wanted to address that. I know that's always a hot topic because those placements are levy dollars, they are very expensive. Um, for the most part, they're levy dollars. Um, those have evident flow and we are seeing an overall decrease. It's, I, I don't wanna predict that that will continue, those are unpredictable and certainly we want kids to have what they need, um, but, uh. We are trying, we always take those very seriously, the, to get kids to that level. Recently, the children's unit has been focusing, um, on shorter-term, more intensive placements when needed. So that tends to be just slightly more expensive, um, per day. But they're also, the one we've been using, it's actually out of Grand Rapids, recently is also capped at a ninety-day stay. And we're seeing kids that, we've had like three kids go through there and they've been there about an average of forty-five days. So it's considerably shorter term than many of sort of those traditional, those Gerard. Um, regional, you know, the treatment center down in Austin, um. You know, we're looking at a nine to twelve-month stay typically, um, for about the same cost per day. Um, so recently we've had some discussions, for instance, with Greater Minnesota, which is in Wilmer, much closer to our, for our families to access. And, um, I talked to the director there about, like, we would like to see that happen there. Let's put a cap on those days. Let's get this done in that ninety days. Um, the adult world has been doing that for a while with an IRT-type, um, program. It's time for the children's world to move, um, more towards that, um, as well. Um, when you have that pressure that you have to discharge, then you get those appointments with the psychiatrist, you get those medications onboard, you get the, the kids in the family what they need faster. Um, so I'm hoping that we can continue that trend. Um, currently, uh, we have two youth who are in residential settings. Um, so we, we know that the pandemic has been a hot topic and it certainly has been around our office as well. So initially when the pandemic hit, um, we had a lot of concerns. Our referrals basically stopped. Uh, we, I mean, it was very silent across the board, child protection, children's mental health, adult mental health. We were not getting calls for service, we weren't getting referrals. Um, and we knew that things were still, people were still struggling, possibly more, um, but we weren't hearing, um, from our partners. In terms of like the referral sources. Um, we were hearing a lot from law enforcement, they were dealing with, with what maybe had in the past come into us earlier and, and they were getting the crisis calls. Um, so we did attempt to do more outreach, um. For instance, Pat, we, Pat's unit gets notified anytime someone uses the crisis center. Or if there's a hold order at hospital, we get those notifications and her unit, um, started doing outreach to any person that had been utilizing those services. Um, so they don't necessarily qualify for service at that point, but, you know, they can help get them in or get them connected to services, so. Um, was doing a lot of those types of things. Um, we also, for our children's mental health, um, and through our safe schools meetings, we did try to promote the children's mental health, getting those social workers to go ahead and connect to us. Even if the child doesn't qualify for services, we have no problem trying to connect them to a therapist or something, you know, to fill that need. Um, so we were receiving, like I mentioned, through our partners, especially law enforcement, we're receiving reports of increased mental health concerns in the community. I think you're all probably pretty well aware of that. Um, so a really neat partnership was our law enforcement, um, was able to add. Um, the iPads to several of the squad cars, which allow direct access to the mobile crisis team professional. Um, so that if they go to a residence, that person's having mental health crisis, they can just, you know, have a hand on the iPad. And that person can connect with mental health professional, that professional can help law enforcement direct the care from there. Um, so that was a really, um, that was a really neat partnership and I think it really shows. How dedicated our law enforcement is in Meeker County to appropriately treating mental health. Um, I feel like they, they've been on the cutting edge of that and they're great partners to us. Um, mental, adult mental health also started an outreach program in the jail. So trying to assist folks in getting set up for services like case management or maybe some chemical use, um, treatment. So that when they're being discharged, they can maybe go into that system seamlessly to help, um, through citizenism. Um, I think you heard about our, a little bit about our Meeker Cares group, um, that community resource was developed to add, um. And added to our website, so if you go on the website, there's just really neat, there's just a really complete list of services, both directly here and in the surrounding areas. Um, I feel like Pat and Patson, um, heading that for our team. But what I've seen, looking from the outside, is that's really been a huge conduit for communication between, with multiple agencies. I don't know if you have any more to say about that.
We just continue to add resources to that list, um, continue to think outside the box. How do we reach people? How do we get information to them? How do we link them in? So that they have the information they know they need to have in order to move forward, so.
Um, and in addition to that, our, our social services supervisory area, so that's Pat and I and then Amy, which, um, also has the Weaver and vulnerable adult populations. Um, have also really focused on increasing our cross-unit, um, communication. Which has always been fairly strong, but we're just trying to really solidify that so that when we have family come in, um. And family that we're working with right now, we're working with the kids, it's in the court system. The dad has a lot of, um, mental health issues and physical health issues, so all three units could be involved in supporting that family. So that we make sure those kids are getting the services the family needs to stay in the home. So really trying to use that like all-in kind of approach. Um, and be very purposeful, I guess, about that. Um, in children's mental health, we've seen, uh, an increase, I think overall, there's been a lot happening, but an increase in anxiety and depression. So people often ask, well, how does school affect that? Both ways, it's been really interesting. So kids sometimes feel a lot of anxiety about going to school. For those kids, being at home maybe helped them. Um, for kids that are at home and they're isolated and maybe not the great place, or they're just bored. Um, and they need and thrive on that structure that school provides, when they go back into school, they do great. Um, so it's been really up and down. And I think the schools can, they've been, it's been tough on them. If you know a teacher or an administrator, thank them. It's been a really, really incredibly hard year and they, they're so dedicated to these kids that they work with. Um, so our team just really continues to try and find creative ways to support families. We do get a grant through the state that we normally use for RASPIT. Um, so that families can have breaks or kids can maybe go do a fun activity while mom and dad get a break. Um, the state allowed us to expand that, so especially like during the stay-at-home order, we were able to purchase like games for the fam, family to play together. Or, um, I think one kiddo, we were able to get them a bike so they could go outside and do some things. So we don't normally, we aren't able to do that, but the state allowed for that spending to change in order to try and meet some of those families' needs for the pandemic. Um, and our staff have, um, just tried to make that fun, you know, tried to get kids what they need to just have those breaks, some arts and craft supplies, something like that. Um, we did also receive a grant from the Litchfield Area Foundation, so we also were able to do, this is, we're finishing this project this month, um, sensory baskets. So this is a basket that has some different, um, calming activities for kids in it. Um, all of our foster families will be getting a basket that they can use with the kiddos in their care. Um, and a local, um, occupational therapist is gonna do a training on that, so she helped us find the items that would be appropriate. And she's gonna do a Zoom, um, training with all the foster parents in May. So that they can have those, to use those tools in their home. So those tools generally help kids calm and regulate their bodies, so trying to address those needs. Um, and then Pat and I just wanted to take knowledge to that, you know, during the pandemic, you know, from, from our perspective, we've seen staff. Just strive so hard to do their best to serve, um, their individuals and the families that we work with. Um, they've really gotten creative. Of course, we're primarily meeting with clients over Zoom, but. Based on the client's needs, um, staff have been, you know, meeting with them outside or using like a room two-hundred space or a different large area space. To be able to meet with families when, when that's needed. Um, staff has dropped off items from food shelf deliveries to games and other things, or just waving through the window or chatting through a window, um, or a door. Um, we needed to put sunscreen in the cars. Staff outside, you know, trying to see families throughout the summer, um, avoiding getting some sunburn. So they just really looked at any way they could, um, promote those connections, break up the isolation for the families that we serve. Um, and we just would like to acknowledge their, I mean, tremendous effort, I think, in, in doing the best that they could despite all of these challenges that we've all faced. Um, and then finally, I think, um, the work we do is just such a privilege. And, um, the families that we work with, it's been really amazing to just witness their resiliency and their strength. And it's just a real honor to be able to work with them, that they trust us to provide full service to, to them, open their families to us, that's a hard thing to do. And it's really, it, it's an honor really to be able to, to walk beside them, um, especially over the last year, so. That was all the prepared, but if you do have questions?
Just a couple of comments. I had a chance, I got invited out to Wings.
Oh, okay.
To take a tour and, um, that was eye-opening, to say the very least. And then, um, Maddie there's told me, she's, I said, well, these kids, when they're done, what's next? She said, here's the unfortunate, some of these kids don't know where they're going. They don't even know if they have a bed. Then on the legislative conference from AMC. They stated that tonight, meaning any given night, there's going to be over ten thousand young people that don't know where they're gonna sleep. You know, that's sad, you know, it really is. And you guys, thank you, you do a tremendous job, all of you, so.
That's very nice.
I agree, thank you, thank you.
Are you seeing, um, we just talked about the reluctance, you know, when people seek help. I think that's, there's always a stigma with that, with mental health especially, but I mean, are you seeing a significant change pre-COVID to now? In that or first, you know, opinion, in your opinion, I guess, I just.
I, I don't know that I would say it's significant, um, because that stigma is always there.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, i- it's about, and, and part of what May is, being Mental Health Awareness Month. Is about helping people understand that there shouldn't be that stigma. Um, there shouldn't be that, that heavy layer, um, that keep. There shouldn't be that that heavy layer that keeps people from seeking help. You know, we talk about physical health things, people aren't unwilling to go to a doctor for that, but with their mental health, they are. It's talked about more. Whether that's reducing it, I'm not sure we're there yet.
Okay.
I think that's always our hope, that it'll be just as accepted as diabetes or cancer. Or any other medical reason why people don't seek help. But we're not there yet.
So I will say, Steve, I think the younger generation, that we might see that coming up, like in talking to kids, I think they are more open about that in that generation. Sometimes the parents are still reluctant and they don't want their kid labeled, and that's a legitimate concern. But I think that the kids talk about things. I also will say, I'm gonna shout out to Andrew here. In the, you guys have probably seen some of the newsletters that Andrew has sent out and, you know, the very first one, I think I responded to him and said, thank you. Like he talked about mental health in the newsletter, what can staff do if they're struggling? Here's your resources. And I feel like we can be really good role models for that, and you know, as an employer. And in the community, so I I I feel like when you see the county taking that kind of lead. Hopefully those other agencies or those other businesses are gonna follow. And we've all struggled. I don't know anybody that has not struggled over the last year with feeling that isolation. Or feeling like, do I have depression? What is this? You know, and and just questioning that stuff. So as a community and as a society, I hope we can really enter into those conversations in a more open manner. And I just appreciate the leadership that Andrew showed right away when he started here. And I think that was commented, several staff commented on that too, so that was good stuff.
And I think you're, you touched on the sheriff's department and stuff too, and because they do, you do see it. I I mean, and we talked about, you know, first responding to the, you see, you see the reluctance of people to go in to get any type of medical help. And then we also, sad to say, you see the fatality or mortality rate. On the other side, when we do get calls, we've had more of those. But we also see the children in homes and stuff where you, it's not a great situation. And sometimes that is not, you know, reported in those things, you know, so trying to get, see, get the help to those people, to those individuals is is the toughest challenge, so. I thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you ladies.
Tricky job. It's a tricky job.
We have on the agenda, it says approved social services accounts payable.
That's Marlene.
That's me. You're you're. I had Marlene here with a little arrow and I thought.
Marlene Romell, fiscal supervisor, and I just need you to approve the social service accounts payable. Are there any questions?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have any questions for Marlene? Questions about the paperwork?
I didn't actually have any, got lucky today.
I'm not even here, so.
I know, I had to rotate it. Did you just move this? There's a button that does that for you. It took me four times. Lucky my nine-year-old told me what to do.
Computer problems.
Yeah.
All the kids. Do we have any questions for Marlene?
I do not.
Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor of approving the accounts payable, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Marlene.
Thanks, thanks.
That's where you go sometimes.
I know, you're busy.
It was interesting, no?
The hospital.
No figure pointing, right?
And then Barb asked me to fill in for her if she wasn't available.
I'll make the motion to approve the county and hospital accounts payable.
Second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have any discussion about county and hospital accounts payable? If we have a chance to look those over. Any questions?
I do not.
Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. Diane.
Seen you for a long time.
How are you doing? Your way through.
Yep, I think so. Well, Diane Winter from Public Health, and I'm just here today to give you a brief update on the COVID-19. So if you watch the data at all, a few weeks ago, you started to see somewhat of a spike. For the epidemiologists of the state, they're feeling like we're kind of on the other side of that. Certainly not a spike like we saw last November, December, but somewhat of a spike. Couple of things that entered into that, they felt part of the spike may have been due to some sporting events and larger events, as well as some travel with spring break and those type of things. But the good news, what they're feeling is really counteracted that spike, are the number of vaccines that have been administered throughout the state. So there, the last several weeks now, we have seen the positivity rate or the number of positive tests within the total number of tests given in a week decreasing, so that is really good news. If you're looking at Meeker County data, this would be as of yesterday, per the state, there were 2,451 confirmed and 44 probable. And since the onset, we have had 116 hospitalizations, 27 ICU admissions, and 38 deaths. And now, I'm not an epidemiologist, I've not really dug into the data, but just looking at it briefly, we are seeing more school-aged. And we're seeing more households, so either school-aged children and their families, or just households that are related or connected one way or the other. We're still very concerned about the variant strains. There are five that have been identified. When I was here last time, I think that was about the time the first UK or the B117 had been identified within the county. They don't test all of the positive tests for the variant strain, because it's a kind of a timely process. They have a set of criteria that they determine which ones will be tested for a variant and which ones will not. But it's the assumption that at least 50% of the cases that are circulating across the state are a variant, and most likely the UK or the B117. And the concern with the variants is just that they're highly transmissible, so they spread very, very rapidly. But they do seem to be, the vaccines seem to be effective against them, so that is also good news. So talking about the vaccine, so.
Before you move on, can I ask one quick question? Am I right that the hospitalizations and deaths are down though, right?
Yes.
As we're getting a younger group that's getting.
Right. The hospitalizations have stabilized the last few weeks. There was a a peak with the hospitalizations, that was very similar to the peak of positive cases. But the hospitalizations have stabilized. Now, I did hear that there's still some ICU bed capacity issues in the metro. But that can't necessarily all be attributed to COVID, because there's other reasons why they need ICU beds as well, but they have been stabilizing as well last couple.
Three weeks ago, after that, so there was a lot of flying people out.
Yes.
That's gotten better.
Yes.
But it wasn't all COVID, it's other things from the sick people you talked about, probably the real ICU or whatever, so.
People coming in there.
Right.
In a more serious condition.
So I mean, I always think that's good news, the hospitalization, because I think it is the younger people that are getting it. They seem to survive it better. Is our testing increasing? Do we know?
The last I heard from the hospital about testing was a couple of weeks ago, so I don't know what it's been recently.
So once school's out, we should see that shift there, where the younger people are contracting it more. Would you not kind of assume that?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I can probably assume that. I mean, it's hard to say what's gonna happen over the summer. And I'll talk more about that in a little bit, you know, there there's the the push right now is to vaccinate 16 and 17-year-olds with the Pfizer. Because they're eligible to be vaccinated. Unfortunately, there has not been a lot of interest, whether it's not wanting to miss prom and graduation. Or just being uncertain about vaccinating your 16 or 17-year-old, it's it's a little uncertain as to why the uptake is not as high as what I think the state expected it to be. But there's also a request, or we anticipate that Pfizer will be asking to have their emergency use authorization amended, to start vaccinating 12 to 16-year-olds. So if that happens over the summer and there's good uptake, there, we could counteract some of that increase that might occur as families are getting together. Kids are spending time together, you know, that, what all happens over the summer, there's a lot of summer events that just put people together in large groups. And not knowing what the governor is going to say this week, we're anticipating that he's going to make some sort of an announcement around our current restrictions. That could impact that as well. So it's really, yeah, I wish I had a crystal ball, but I can't really say.
I think some of this is, I don't know what he's gonna announce, but I can tell you that people have just started to move on.
Oh, yeah.
It's called fatigue, you know, businesses can only what, do it, try as you may. It's just very, very difficult.
Wasn't it yesterday Florida completely opened up?
I mean, I get it. I do. And so, I'm hoping that he, I don't know what he's gonna do.
That's what we're hoping for.
Talk about not having a ban season when you're outside, or I think he did change that, but I just think at some point in time here.
County Fair?
Well, they're having.
Well, and perhaps if they allow things to open up, then the younger generation who's not getting vaccinated, that starts getting sick, eventually gets vaccinated. You know, I mean, let some of this stuff solve its own problem.
Isn't their goal to, I mean, it's 16 and over now for vaccines, right? You guys are gonna do some of that, I think.
With the hospital this week.
Hospital. Is it gonna go to 12 or?
That's what we're hoping for, but it hasn't been, it it hasn't been approved by the ACIP. So it has to be, they have to have their authorization reviewed and amended, much like the vaccine was approved several months ago. Now they'll just go through that same process, but looking at the data specifically for 12 to 16-year-olds. But the the trial threes are showing that it's effective and safe, so.
I mean, they used to come into the schools and everybody'd get in line and you'd go right down.
I did that.
They'd they'd shoot you and send you back to class and took care of business. Everybody got.
Nobody got to say no, did they?
No.
Remember hating shot day at school?
And and I'm curious now, did Meeker County go into first district and offer? What percent of employees took that opportunity?
I couldn't tell you what percentage, but I will tell you when we first met with them, they were thinking that they would need over 100 vaccines. But what they found when they surveyed staff, that there were a number of employees that had gone elsewhere to get vaccinated.
Already.
Already, yeah. And then we probably vaccinated another, I'm gonna, I don't think I dare say, because I might be mixing up my locations. But it wasn't at, the uptake wasn't at the rate that they had anticipated, but I don't know what their overall uptake was when you looked at those individuals that were vaccinated elsewhere.
And I think that's been part of the issue with vaccinations is, they started one way, gonna just, just, you know, and then in the meantime, the BA was throwing everybody up there. And they're not telling, because of HIPAA, I understand, because of federal laws with HIPAA. For a while, and Lee told me they weren't finding out.
Yes.
Like they called my dad, well, he'd already had his up at the BA, but they haven't.
Right.
So I I'm I'm thinking some of that has gotten better, and I had friends that drove to southern Minnesota and get one. So how did you, so how do you know really?
Right.
Are these numbers right or wrong? And my last question is, are they ever gonna reset these numbers? Because I'm really tired of looking at, you know. They shouldn't go on forever, shouldn't they?
No, I.
I mean, when you look at it, it's like, all these people, and then people think, well, now we have 2,000 people in Meeker County with COVID. No, we do not.
Well, we'd be happy to stop putting that on the website.
But I wish that the numbers would be such as, this is what we.
30-day trend.
Right, and if you dig into it on the website, on that dashboard, you can find out how many are out of quarantine.
Right, yeah.
But I just think there's gonna come a time where you write a 30-day trend.
Some, something like.
From the state, though. That's not your problem, that's just my.
Talked about shot day at school. I remember that too, you know, I think they use the same needle on several.
They may have.
Well, they had the gun. I don't know if you remember that, but back in the.
Yeah.
Wow, 60s, 70s, they had this gun thing that you could just actually kind of go like a staple gun, literally. I don't know how it worked. I never used it, but that's what I remember.
We have met the farm all the time. Just two CCs. You do it all the time.
They did in the service.
Roll your sleeve up.
They changed the needles for us.
Don't move, don't wiggle.
I remember.
I don't think that, yeah.
I thought they used the same needle they use for livestock. Then, yes, the local vet came to Wisconsin.
Polio, like I did, I can remember as a, and I was pretty young, I'm old now, but how relieved everyone was when when Salk found out. And I read the other day that he never patented, and he lost it, he lost millions and millions of dollars because he just wanted a cure. But now, I was thinking that COVID people would say the same way, but it's not hap- you know, it's not.
That's where March of Dimes, I mean, wasn't that polio? March of Dime, they received, that was the whole theory behind the March of Dimes, the way it got started was to send in your dimes, because that's what a vaccine costs. And they got, the federal government got more dimes than than they ever possibly ima- I mean, they got, and that's where the whole March of Dimes thing started. I think it was with polio, it was with, or smallpox, or what, it was, but they, the people were sending in bags of dimes, they they didn't realize there was that many dimes in the countryside.
Pharmaceutical companies could think that way on some important drugs now, but anyway, that's, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Also, talking a little bit more about vaccine, I mentioned the fact that there's, we're anticipating that the Pfizer will soon be available and acceptable for 12 to 16-year-olds. A couple of weeks ago, you, I'm sure you heard about the pause on the Johnson and Johnson, that pause was lifted a little over a week ago. What they did was just created a warning for prescribers to consider whether individual women, and specifically 18 to 49, are at risk. And if they should be given an alternative to such Johnson and Johnson. We did do a Johnson and Johnson clinic hundred dose just prior to the pause. And we had really good uptake with that clinic, but now we're not certain, given the fact that this has happened, whether there will be interest in that again. So we're just kind of watching to see what happens around the state. And if we have an opportunity to take Johnson and Johnson, and there seems to be a good uptake, we may reconsider that. So I think when I was here last time, I talked a lot about our vaccination strategies and trying to get the word out. And what we were really struggling with at the time was that 90% of the vaccine we received had to be in arms within 72 hours, 100% in seven days. And and the barriers that that caused to try to get the vaccine into those high-risk populations. Well, fortunately, they finally lifted it after multiple weeks of just saying, you know, trying to describe to the state what challenges that caused. So that's the good news. The not-so-good news is that the Moderna vials, which is a vaccine we typically receive, has anywhere from nine to 11 doses per vial. You would think at this point in time, they would be making the vials smaller, no, they're gonna make them bigger. Around 15 to 14, 15 doses. So that's just going to complicate things moving down the road, because we're trying to find individuals interested in being vaccinated as it is. We can't turn anybody away, so there's just gonna be wasted doses. We really don't have an alternative. We did do, we had 60, we had 80 doses available yesterday, we had 60 individuals register, and then we had one person cancel. And we ended up giving 59. We made calls out to some people that we knew were interested. But we no longer have a standby list, because there isn't such a thing, because everyone is eligible and everyone that we knew that wanted to be vaccinated has been contacted. Meeker County's vaccination rates overall, 43.6% have had at least one dose, and 30%, 38% of the overall population has completed the series. Now, that's a little bit behind the state, the state's at 58.4% and 49.7% have completed. Public health, as of the end of, what month did we just end? April. 3,357 doses, that would have been 1,855 first doses, 1,502 second doses. Again, about two weeks ago, we were filling clinics, 200-dose clinic, we could probably fill in a couple of hours. Two weeks ago, we hit a wall, we just couldn't even fill, we had a 200-dose clinic planned, we planned to fill it, and we couldn't even fill it to 60. I think we ended up vaccinating around 60, we contributed, we transferred 30 doses to a hospital in the Sauer County that needed extra vaccine. We didn't take any vaccine the next week, and we just tried to look at our approach to see what we could do and why we weren't getting people to register for our clinic. So we heard the hospital was experiencing the same thing, actually heard that the South Central Region, about a week or two prior, some of the counties in southern Minnesota were experiencing the same thing. So it was kind of determined that that 80% saturation that the governor and MDA. It was kind of determined that that eighty percent saturation that the governor and MDH was looking for was just not gonna happen, that forty to fifty percent is probably as good as it's going to get. Um, so what have we done in the meantime, so I mentioned that we didn't take vaccine for a week, um and then we. Actually did a mailing and you've probably received it in the mail already, or if you haven't, you should soon. A postcard that just encouraged individuals who haven't been vaccinated to consider to be vaccinated. And then where their options were to go and to be vaccinated within Meeker County. Um, so those just went out, started on Friday, we have seen some increased telephone calls, like I said, we did do a sixty dose clinic yesterday. And we are doing a one hundred and twenty dose clinic a week from Thursday. So far, we have just a handful of people registered, but the information just went out yesterday, so we're hoping that that will fill. Um, and we continue to just um push that information out any way that we can, whether it's through the county website, K L F D's website. K L F D has been announcing it, it's on the Vaccine Finder, um, any uh listeners or anybody that we have, we push it out, and then also M D H has been. Providing some contacts from employers who haven't been able to um secure a way to have their employees vaccinated, so we do reach out to them as well. And um so Meeker Memorial receives the Pfizer vaccine and they did a reach out to schools a couple of weeks ago, asking about. Interest levels, having their sixteen and seventeen year olds vaccinated. Um, they do have a clinic planned this week with Eaton Valley Watkins on Thursday and will be sending support their staff there to support them in that clinic. I don't believe that um there was enough interest in the other districts that I'm aware of, I think Litchfield was kind of on the fence, they were kind of waiting. But not real big uptake in the schools, I think a part of that has to do with the fact that it's coming to be the end of the school year, there's lots of big things coming. Prom, graduations, band concerts, things, but they're maybe just wanting to postpone that, I'm hoping until the summer. Uh Walmart and um Family Fair are both vaccinating in the county as well as the hospital and clinics, and they had experienced similar issues with not being able to fill their clinics. We are planning to meet with them within the next week or so, just to identify as we move forward, who's gonna be responsible. For vaccinating, who and what's our approach going to be, so that we're not all trying to target the same individuals and trying to to vaccinate the same population. So our, moving forward, we don't want to miss any opportunities to vaccinate those who are willing and want to be, we identify that there's going to be wastage, we're trying to avoid that to the greatest extent possible, but you can't turn people away. Um, so good news or something that a little more positive, we have had one hundred and thirty three and a half hours of of volunteer time to date, which has been phenomenal. We have had a really fantastic group of volunteers, nurses who have been coming to clinic and vaccinating, and they have just been. Um, very supportive and accurate and we can rely on them, so that's been great. And the last thing, just a little bit on funding, um. Prime West. Granted each public health agency within Prime West five thousand dollars just to do some outreach and education around vaccination. Um, no strings tied to it, just that we had to submit a letter saying kind of briefly what we would intend to use that money for. And then the community health board just received two hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty four dollars of federal COVID relief funding. And I don't, oh, I take that back, they received over seven hundred thousand.
That's yours.
Our share is two hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty four, so there is funding coming into the department to. Fund our vaccination efforts and other COVID response efforts, uh which is helping the budget a little bit, but um we'll see now. It's two hundred and eleven, eight hundred and thirty four thousand, sounds like a lot of money. Um, but when you look in perspective, the amount of time it takes to plan a clinic and then staff a clinic, it really doesn't go real far. So I think that's all I have unless you have questions.
One quick question, so how is the vaccine transported to you? And then when you send it, I think you sent it to La Sure? How is it, do you have to have special transportation?
Yep, so it comes to us directly from McKesson, so McKesson is a pharmaceutical that that ship, creates and ships um vaccine over, you know, even our regular vaccine. It comes in a um insulated um carton with temperature monitoring devices in it, so when you open it, you can tell that that temperature's been kept within the correct range. Um, and then when we ship it or we send it to someone else, we have um a transport cooler. That also has the same monitoring device and everything in it, unfortunately, the night that we went to transport it to La Sure County, we were going to pick up. The hospital's vaccine, cause they also reallocated a number of doses and bring everything all to once, um our transport cooler wasn't functioning the way it was, we couldn't keep the temperatures cold enough. So we put it back in the fridge and um notified that hospital in La Sure. And they came the next morning and got it rather than taking the chance, but typically it goes in a very specific um transport cooler with monitoring devices.
Thank you, I was just curious.
So we had a, I'm on the finance slide, we had a. And they said they got the seven hundred and three thousand.
Yes.
And they were talking about getting some cold storage, did you hear anything about that? I I it might have been the gallon. Isn't that a huge, huge expense?
Well, I didn't hear anything about it, um.
I mean, I don't think they're talking about out of this funding because the C H B kept some of the funding, not very much, but, and then this is distributed by population. So Meeker got so much, simply got so much. You haven't heard anything about that, I didn't say anything at the time, I just didn't think.
I wasn't aware of that conversation, um, but I don't know. I I guess I wouldn't consider that as an expense at this point in the response, because. We'll probably never use it again.
Might have been seven passing, my other thing is, um quickly. You, so you feel like there will be either the drug stored one, you or the hospital, not all three? Cause when the hospital puts on these clinics, I repeat, it costs a lot of money, I bet it doesn't for you, but you know, it takes a lot of our resources. And now you guys have gotten this two hundred and twelve thousand almost, and I know it doesn't last forever, so my hope is that one person will be up. Like you guys working together in Eaton Valley is a great idea, but I feel like, do you feel like public health will be taking really no kind of?
You know, I I feel like public health might be the safety net, I think the hospital and clinics probably won't be doing the clinics like they're doing right now, but they're still gonna have to vaccinate their patients.
Right.
Um, and what the pharmacies, I don't know what the role of the pharmacy is moving forward, and that why we wanted to meet to find out. Are they even interested in vaccinating moving forward?
And do, because I don't think they make a lot of money out of it, I mean.
No, I don't think they were given a choice, I think they were just kind of said you're gonna vaccinate.
So, but that doesn't make sense to you to have one person, one agency more handling it and then. Calling for help when you need.
I would say, yeah.
Because everybody I talked to was having the same issue. They can't. They can't get ours, so. And and I think that stopping the Johnson and Johnson was very hurtful to the whole thing, um. You know, what, seven, eight people out of how many million?
No, seven million.
That happens, you'll never convince me that that doesn't happen with every vaccination, right?
Even the flu, you go and get the flu shot, some people will be home for a day with a headache.
So I think that affected the whole thing, even the Moderna and the Pfizer, so I think that was a huge. If if you believe in vaccinations, that was a huge uh issues. Thank you for all of, I know you guys have worked hard on them, I appreciate all you're doing.
Diane, did you, is that a Pfizer clinic in Eaton Valley this week, did I hear that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
There's.
Thursday.
I don't have it written down, it's like three to five or something, it's like in the day, yeah.
Do they need an appointment?
Um, it's all done through the school, so I think the school nurses are coordinating with the parents, cause the parents need to be present, yeah, for that, because they're sixteen and seventeen. Um, so they need to be present for the education and also um they need to obviously have a sign consent, and I think you'd wanna have that consent sign in front of you, so.
And will there be a two shot?
It'll be a two shot, so they'll have to be back in three weeks. I I wanna say they planned it, um, so that would, they would be okay for graduation and prom, that they wouldn't have that.
Before the end of the school.
Impact of the second dose, yeah.
Do you know as public health, do you know what um Moderna or Pfizer, do you know what you're getting? Uh, very far in advance usually, or is it kind of what's available or allotted to you and you take what you get?
We find out, it's a little bit of everything, it has gotten better, it's gotten more streamlined, but now we are finding out. Late on the day on Thursday, what we're eligible to receive, and it's almost always Moderna. If you take the Pfizer, you have to take one thousand one hundred and seventy doses, I think it comes in. Now they're gonna break it down into half of that, but even so, we couldn't take a thousand doses and then get it into arms in seventy two hours, that was just ridiculous. Uh, so, um, most often, public health gets the Moderna, we do. And and we have been getting opportunities to receive Johnson and Johnson, um, but now no one's necessarily wanting to take that until we know what the uptake is going to be, but we usually know late on Thursday, early Friday morning what we're getting.
Okay.
So Diane, that clinic you're gonna have at the school now, if I had a child and I came with a child and they hadn't been vaccinated, is there enough vaccine to say, well, yeah, what, I get it too? Or do they have just enough?
Yeah, I don't know what the hospital has, cause it's the hospital's vaccine. Um, so I don't know what they have available, if it's um overrun from a clinic that they couldn't fill, or if they specifically asked for vaccine for this group.
I was wondering if I'm being followed, have they started talking about, no, you attend a public school, K twelve, if you attend a college. Public college, you have to show proof of vaccination, what's the talk on that, Diane?
All I've heard so far is that only private colleges can require them to be vaccinated or require proof, be. For any authorization, you can't force anyone to be vaccinated, or can you exclude them, so I don't know what is going to happen. Um, I don't, like I said, I don't think they can require anyone to be vaccinated or exclude them if they're not vaccinated.
And I don't understand that, because we always had to prove you've had your tetanus, your M M R, you've had your polio before you could go to a public school. Why isn't this any different?
Because it's still emergency use, it hasn't gone through all the approvals. It it's been approved for the for the COVID in in the pandemic, but like the M M R and the polio, all of those are approved. Um, without a, without a pandemic, so they're, I don't know how to put it into into words, but.
They're not actually approved at all, is what they tell you when they give you the shot, right? They're here, you're using this under emergency.
Emergency youths and the others, yeah.
Pandemic or the other ones that had them all, not that, because the way a doctor explained it to me, it's been fully tested.
It has.
Normally, because they threw a lot of money in it, but it normally takes four or five years before the FDA actually puts their stamp of approval, am I saying this right? So they've done that with those other vaccines, but this one probably will be another couple of years, so when you go to have it, then they tell you. When you, when you read the paper, when the nurse, they said that this has been issued because of the pandemic and it actually doesn't have the FDA.
So if it's a, becomes approved, like the flu vaccine or the polio or whatever, with those same parameters, then it, you could require individuals to have that vaccine in order to.
Would that be a governor thing, would that be a Minnesota Education Association? Who would make that determination?
Department of Education that would have to make that decision.
Interesting.
Very good. But because if that becomes the case, then you would see your numbers go up.
I don't think that.
We had different. Yeah, I don't know if it will either, probably boosters in the fall for those that have been vaccinated, um but we don't even know that for sure yet.
Other questions? Anything else for Diane?
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Diane.
Alright, let me move on to Andrew and our appointment list.
Yes, we have some appointments for um the Park Board, uh we have four applications for two vacancies. Two of those applications were for people who are looking to be reappointed to the Park Board. Uh, and those are the folks that um Braden would suggest appointing.
The reappointments.
The two reappointments, yes, so that is Donald Knitsko.
Knitsko.
Knitsko and Paul Fink.
Now, are there years in term, how many years in the term, and are they the same for every committee?
I believe for the Park Board, it's three year terms, Corey.
I believe.
On the appointments.
I think I sent.
Just do that, and I think it's.
Three on the park.
Free, and then I think you have five consecutive or something like that.
There are term limits on everything.
Yeah.
They're not all.
They're not all, because of that term.
And these individuals have not overextended their terms, yet they're still eligible.
Correct.
Sure. And they represent all of the various districts.
There there is, there is a list in the packet that identifies where not only these folks, but uh the rest of the members of the Park Board. Um, are from within the county to demonstrate the geographic representation that is provided.
And this is one board that does have to have one from each district and then that large.
Correct.
Not everyone's like that, but this one is. So I'm gonna make a motion that we appoint Donnie Knitsko and what was the other name?
Paul Fink.
Paul Fink. Or their, I don't know what the term is, but.
Reappointment.
For reappointment to the Park Board.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, is there any further discussion? Um, the two candidates. Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor of appointing these two individuals to the Park Board, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Alright, and then the next item on our list is um at our work session last week, Commissioner Johnson mentioned that he has a conflict with. The H R A board and the county's providing technology board and is requesting that someone replace him.
Yes. What is the date of this?
It's.
Fourth Monday, I believe.
Fourth Monday, I think you're right, yep.
Is it, what time of day?
It's usually right at noon. And it's usually over here around two hundred.
I mean. It's close, I could do it if nobody else wants to, but if Steve.
No. Fourth Monday at noon, noon is tough.
We don't have a vote on this, this committee.
It's just a hearing.
Yeah.
Julie, did you wanna do it?
No, thank you.
Okay, I will do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys are busy and if I don't make it, I don't make it.
And H R A is the housing redevelopment authority. And uh, there was that um conflict of times.
At two meetings same time.
Right.
We don't need to take action on that, it's just simply a volunteer.
No, I'm not really volunteering, but I'm. Nobody's gonna be able to do this, especially this time of year.
We we should have a motion.
Should have straws up here. Straws, straws.
We should have a motion.
We we should take a motion on that to make the uh.
I will, I will make a motion that the board appoint Beth Ober, Commissioner District One, to the H R A board.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? About the motion? Then we'll take the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much, Beth. Very good.
Yes, thank you.
Do we have Jake here, is he going to make a presentation for the.
Yes, he is, it it looks like he's wrapping up a phone call right now, so I will, just briefly.
People are out there with him, because I've gotten enough phone calls and emails, not to last me a lifetime.
Can we move to this? While we're waiting? Could we move to the next agenda item, because we're already behind time.
The, sure, we can move to the next agenda item, that'd be fine.
We could get that taken care of.
Sure.
Okay, will you handle that for us, Andrew?
Yes, so this agenda item is a a resolution approving the settlement agreement with Jonathan Agri, which is an item that we have uh previously discussed. So we'll just be looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve the um, what is the word I'm looking here?
Settlement agreement.
For uh Jonathan Agri.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll so.
I'll second that motion.
Danny seconded that motion, do we have any questions? I know we received the packet here of information, and I don't know if Brandy has any comments, or do we need to discuss anything? No.
I would leave this as a Andrew Watson County Administrator agenda item.
Okay. Anything else we need to be apprised of, Andrew, or?
Nope, all the information was included in the packet.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote, all those in favor of accepting this settlement, say aye.
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 Madam Chair, it's a resolution, I'm sorry.
Oh, oh, yes it is, right there, it says resolution. There we go, thank you very much for catching that, Corey, would you please take the roll for me?
I'm happy to. Commissioner Ober.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner uh Schiefelbein.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Brodessen.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, now shall we reverse that, Jake? Alright.
And we're back. Great, I got some information for you, so um. Coming back with. Great, got some information for you, so um coming back with um the discussion, uh sentence to serve's contract. Uh, I think we left off with some, some inquiries in regards to clients served, uh you know, days, number of crews on days, et cetera. Um, so some of the information that's provided um is, I, I don't have it on PowerPoint, but the um, it's the STS quarterly statistics uh for past five years, two thousand sixteen through um not quite the end of this quarter four of fiscal year twenty-one, which uh I think lays out a lot of the questions, gives you a lot of the answers to the questions you had in re, in relation to the number of clients served each quarter, um you know, those that have completed, number of GL hours worked, fine amounts paid, um crew days, uh number of crew days worked, average crew size, um and there's a market value in there, and I can maybe speak to the market value, and that's set at uh fifteen dollars an hour, so it's just kind of a, an estimate, and um so we kind of get a flat rate, maybe Mary Jean could speak a little bit to that, uh but it's just kind of a, regarding the work that's done, if you look at it, if it's, you know, painting work, to part work, you know, you could say, well, generally we pay seventeen to twenty dollars an hour doing that, or we pay ten dollars an hour doing that. So it's just kind of an average cost um for the value of the work that was done. Is that revenue? It's not revenue, but I'll, I'll, we, we can talk about revenue a little bit too, but uh it just gives you an idea of the co, the, the, the value of the work that was done during that quarter, so.
And in those projects, I don't, um, it doesn't include my, the hours I work. It just, because I write on my reports, I'll do no crew, but still the job is done, and so, but then, that doesn't include, you know, the amount of money that's, you know, I mean, the same would be for including me.
Well, at fifteen dollars an hour, the minimum is ten, can't. Our average is probably, I don't know what, if I just look at a county employee, so, I mean, I can have a ten dollar an hour cook, or I can have a twenty dollar an hour cook, you know what I'm saying? So, that's kind of a, I'm not arguing with the fifteen.
I'd read them out.
But I'm saying, yeah.
So we throw, we throw a dollar value of fifty, uh just, just to give you, to give you some insight, is, where'd we come up with that?
Right.
Some background behind the dollars there. Um, so as far as revenue goes, um you know, as, for the sentence to serve crew leader program, we do, you know, when it comes to county, we don't charge the county for the work. Uh, but we do charge municipalities, uh we do charge townships. Uh, unfortunately, we just haven't had a lot of townships bite into that, um you know, that's something maybe to advertise more, uh in, in hopes that we can continue this contract. Uh, but with municipalities, uh generally City of Eden Valley and Ledgefield, uh there have been, we, we have invoiced and received uh funds from, from the city for work that's done. With the one exception is, I think there was always an agreement with uh Administrator Vernig at the time, is when it came to those special events like Valley Days and, and um Watercade, that, that was kind of an end kind service because everybody in the county en, enjoys that benefit. So, but when it, with the window washings and uh Boulevard, Boulevard cleanup, um you know, um if you, if you wanna maybe speak a little bit more how that process works, if you're interested in how we invoice uh municipalities for the work, but it's at twenty dollars an hour, just a flat rate, it's not per person, it's just twenty dollars an hour for the work that's done.
Where does that money go?
It goes to the county, county, it comes, it comes in as revenue under the county probation office. So Heather, Heather uh in the county probation office submits, or creates the invoice and.
I never knew that till.
Yeah, yeah, so the state doesn't, that's not, we can get our hands off, that's county, that's all county dollars, so it's not a great deal of revenue. You know, you're talking maybe a couple thousand a year, uh but there's another avenue for um looking at, at opportunities to increase revenue for, for the program, that can bring in some additional dollars to offset, you know, the cost of the program.
So when you do, and you've got some, and Mary Jean, so I was very, I stressed this very loudly at the last meeting, and I'm gonna stress it again, this is not about you. You have done a wonderful job, and I told that to every phone call I got, by the way, which I wasn't wild about, but um it, it isn't about you, you're a hard worker, and I think this county would have a place for you anytime, just, I'm just looking strictly at the seventy-some thousand dollars a year that we spend on this when we have other needs to fill, for instance, in highway, in, on the county, so that's it. So when you work for a private business, cause you've done some work at the Legion for me, I never got billed, um is that included in here?
Well, I, I apologize, that, when you'd call to ask to put up the dance, that was always.
Right.
That was for a Watercade, and I just thought, you know what I mean, I just set it up, just underneath that, it was just a Watercade, and I, you know.
I just was wondering, yeah. I just wondered how you.
No, you're right. But I don't, yeah, and, and I don't do any, that, that, that's the only exception, and I did because it was for Watercade.
And I'm not.
No, 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 but I'm just trying to tell you, because normally, like when I work for the, I have this, kind of a set jobs that I do for the city, and COVID, we had to adjust for all of us, but I mean, it's right through over, it took me a minimum of three, eight-hour days with a crew of eight people. And then we, you know, I, we, we'd bill them quarterly, and then, and like, for example, after the, the snow, you know, they dump, they dump their snow out, out by, I wanna say over by the water treatment plant, and then I pick up the garbage before they had, you know what I mean? So that takes several days to do that, you know, to get, but I mean, I'm just saying, then I just billed them.
So the, so most things then, if they're done at Eden Valley, that's Valley Days, you wouldn't bill for that. Watercade, you wouldn't bill for that, or Watkins, if you go up there and do something, but if you would go to, for instance, if you paint a building, I remember, I think the BFW over here was painted, and I'm not, I don't care about that, I'm just trying to figure out what we bill for and what we don't. Cause as a private business, we should be paying.
Right.
We can pay for it, or do we do that too, that's my real question.
Okay, we, that would, when I, when I painted the Legion.
Okay, just put that.
No, 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 I'm just trying to say, because that was before.
The question is, do we, I'm just, I'm just saying, if you do something for a private business, does that give you?
First of, well, we don't do things like, we don't do, okay, but what I'm gonna say is that, back when I did that, that's when I, there was no charge.
Okay, that was. Right.
And people would approach me.
I mean, they're a nonprofit, I'm not saying that.
Right, that was enough, no, no, but that was back before.
I'm not finding any.
No, 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 I'm just trying to tell you that, that was established, that was before two thousand and ten. Um, but I was just gonna say is, and like, when we, over in um, on Mike Holzman, over in City of, Grove City, after their, their, when they did their street remodel, then I came in with my, my crew, I helped pick up rocks, we did build them. And we, I think I painted a, a basketball court or something and stuff, but anyways, but I was just gonna say is, oh back, now with COVID, I know I get some phone calls, and I just, we haven't, I um, I, you know, it's like when the city is wondering, do they, do you have a lot of people, and I'll, and I'll, and I just said, no, because, cause I know we're looking at the Boulevard, you know, or they have more projects, so.
Well, to, to get off of what we uh originally, when Beth said, hey, let's take a look at it because of the increased prices, because of some counties were actually scrapping the program, and I count, I called uh Commissioners from Lyon County, who were thinking of scrapping the program, and what they decided is to go a one-year thing, and kind of look and see, and their problem with the program was the crew leader. And, and, if you don't have a good crew leader, the program does not work well. So then, I called, I think it was Cottonwood County, who actually discontinued the program, and their same, their, their main thrust is they had a terrible crew leader, and it was piggybacking some other problems, and that's why they discontinued it. And so I think it was prudent to say, hey, let's hold on for a second, but the one thing I do have a gripe with is that, just because of uh the new uh, uh the new generation, if you will, with lacking to wanna work, I feel like the trend is gonna keep going the way it was pre-COVID. Has nothing to do with the crew leader, and then I feel like that gap between the price we pay and the price that we actually earn is gonna get wider and wider. And I'm wondering, can we tell, do we have the ability to tell the state, hey, we'll keep it as is, what it was, their contract before, but we have a problem with these price increases, because the hours that your people work are just gonna go down because they don't wanna work, has nothing to do with the crew leader. That's my only, that's my uh one thing about it, but these other counties that, that paused it or did it, they either went to a different system, or is, is a lack of a good crew leader.
How many counties stopped?
So, um.
What county stopped?
Carlton, Carlton, Pennington, Isanti, Scott.
There's more than three.
It was.
Cottonwood and.
It was a team?
No, St. Louis still has the juvenile.
How about Pope, did Pope stop it?
Oh, I don't know about Pope, I just know, I just know of the, and, and then Winona didn't stop it, but they did not continue, they, one of the crew leaders.
I mean, I, I, I can see where the crew leader would be, and you know, you hear from, and you're not, so it's not about you, Mary Jean, she works hard, it's not that. But I feel like the state needs to be putting some more money into this if we're gonna, I mean, you know, and if you look, it's not a big difference, even before COVID, the payback, and then you're randomly picking whatever an hour you're picking for wages, so if you pick that part a little bit, so I think that, I mean, I feel like the state has to be filibustered to do a little more if they wanna keep this program.
Right, and, and so, in speaking with, uh, Dan, Dan is kind of the one that's feeding me the numbers, and you know, at the end of this biennium, I mean, the program for us is, we're rubbing two nickels together just to get through the rest of the fiscal year, so we're, we're trying to always, when, when we, when you look at these contracts, we're always trying to catch up, and we're always trying to project what the cost is going to be for the next two years, and we always seem to quote-unquote take it to shorts when it comes to this program, so we're trying to keep the cost as low as possible by, you know, and with the seventy-five, twenty-five, you know, with splitting that, splitting it that way, and if you remember back in two thousand and ten, I believe, is when it was fifty-fifty, and that program, because, because of budget, budget shortfall from the O eight, O nine deficits, that it went from a seventy-five, twenty-five contract. So that, a, a, and, and I, I agree with you, Commissioner Ober, I mean, yes, I mean, I, I, this is a conversation we're gonna continue to have, I had with, with Dan, um our program director, and looking at even reevaluating this contract, you know, throughout the year, and if we come into, rolling into fiscal twenty-three, constantly crunching those numbers, making, and seeing, because we have a lot of crew leaders and cost potentially going away with a lot of these top, top-end or crew leaders that have retired, reevaluating the second half of this biennium contract to see if there's a change in that three point four percent. So we still don't continue to push that cost on the county and state, but we can reduce that maybe to two point three percent increase, and amend that, the, maybe the second half of the biennium of the contract. So it's, it's something that we need to continue to do, that if we see these cost increases, that we have to share, share it, but it's because it's statutorily seventy-five, twenty-five. How can we continue to reevaluate where the cost is at this point in time, to this point in time, to this point in time, is there a change? Do we see a decline in the cost of the program, and can we amend the contract to reduce the percentage increase from three point four to a lower percentage increase? So the cost, the cost goes down for the next July, uh January payment, so.
Does it make any difference, um, the, the crew that, that you put together? If it's, if those folks are told by a judge, you're going to go into this program, okay, we, we get, we get two people that have to go into that, and then you go into the jail and you say, do I have any volunteers, and is that where the rest of the crew can come from? I would rather come out of the jail and serve than to sit over here, are those the two resources for your developing a crew?
Yeah, that, it, they have to be court ordered, um, and for, um, so, but also to, and return, years ago, we used to be able to take volunteers out. We can't now because of liability, um, but, um, but I'm just.
Well, also, also, look, yes, I mean, so we have two resources we can bring crews in, from the community and from the jail. So um, from the community, the court ordered from both aspects of it, and in the jail, if they, if they're court ordered to complete twenty-four hours of sentence to serve, and they've done that, we can also look at past fines, or we can look at the supervision fee to pay off, so there's other avenues that we can, that are not necessarily court ordered, but we have statutorily are allowed to do that. So if they have past new fines that they can continue to work off, they can get a referral from their agent to work those fines off as well, is, is same in the community. Um, so, yeah, so we have two different resources in which we can get people out with Mary Jean, the community, the community probation folks and the ones that are in custody. And, and based on court ordered or uh they, their, their court ordered fines, they, they can work off as well.
And the judge has been very creative sometimes, and, and speaking of Judge Beckman, um, sometimes she'll say, you're gonna do twenty-four hours a week till you get a job. It's kind of in standard for them to get a job, um, but it also helps them get work ethics and work skills to develop that too. But anyways, but that's, I was just trying to answer yours, that we can't volunteer, but yes, you're right, it comes from two different entities, you know, from the jail and from home, but, but they have to be court ordered somehow.
Because I think about you, if you go down to the jail and you say, oh, there's ten people sitting in there, and you go, well, we're going to go out and we're gonna do some painting, or we're gonna mull on, or we're gonna do something today, could a couple of those folks say, yeah, I'm in, I don't wanna sit here all day, I'd rather work off my, is.
Yes.
So that is an option, then, then I worry about your safety, do you have to go through training? Do you have to have a law enforcement degree for this position?
No, but the people on my crew are nonviolent, non-threatening, so, and they're screened, the jail helps me as well. The jail screens them if they should be a proper candidate, and also, the judges have said it's up to my discretion as well, if there's.
And, and you do go through safety training annually?
Right.
And we, we, and I'm part of that sentence to serve conference, and we run up through the gamut of, of situational awareness and tool awareness, and, and you know, before she even brings PPL and crew, teaching them how to use the tool, safety precautions with the tool, so there's the toolbox talks, we, we, we call them, that she makes sure that they, their, their safety is important, her safety is important, but yes, I mean, annually, she, you know, with COVID, we didn't have the conference, but annually, safety training is, is a, is a must for all crew leaders.
But I'm not an officer. Um, but I was gonna say is, we do try to have their medic, we, I would, we need their medical permissions that filled out prior to, just in case they have some type of limitation where they won't be able to do the prospective job I'm doing, and I don't want to injure themselves anymore, so, but.
So these individuals who are sentenced to serve are not in jail, if they, if we didn't have the sentence to serve program, where would they be?
See, that's, yeah, and that's a point I was gonna make too, is that we wouldn't have a restarted justice program, that would, that would monitor or be a, be a central uh point for those individuals that are court ordered, because now you got, you got multiple agents up there that are, that are trying to kind of more or less ham and egg. Where these people go, who they go to, what, um, you know, the, the individual placements that they, they'll go to, so I fear that we would see a lot more clients uh being in violation of their court order conditions to complete community work service, because it, it's, it's, it's disjointed, it would be disjointed without having a central point person to focus those, all those placements, right, so like with Mary Jean's role, she makes sure all individual placements, she's communicated with them, they sign a kind of an agreement, uh, I sign off on that, and that, all, all those folks that are required to do community work services, so the agents would say, there you go, Mary Jean, and she takes care of where they go, who they go to, and following up with those individual sites to make sure that they're supervised, that they get the hours done, and uh that they, they met their court order obligations, so that's, that's, that's a big point that we, if, if we lost that for this county, you know, we would, we would see just kind of a, a, a very disjointed restarted justice program, more or less.
I'd like to just, can I say one thing on that, is because, um, and it's also very, it's, it's established in our county that, so some people, for example, in Wright County, they were kind of good at this for a while, which is, is not a good thing, they'd say, they, the person lives in Meeker County, and they said, just go over there and find someplace to do the hours. Well, that's not a very good thing, because they could go someplace and do something detrimental, that could, you know, that's at the work site, does that make sense to you what I'm saying? They just kind of go randomly to someplace, but now, people will say, for example, Threads of Hope, someone will, s, s, um, someone will go down there and they'll say, I wanna do, I have fifty hours to do, forty hours to do, they said, no, not unless we hear from Mary Jean, it assures them that I, we know about them, it's a good placement, we don't wanna put anybody, the community or anybody into harm's way, and that's kind of nice to have a go-to person where, when I speak out at Cornerstone, um, to Jeff, and, and, you know, and di- different places, then we all know we're on the same page, so that, we don't, we wanted to accomplish something, get their hours done, but we don't want it, we want it done correctly, and that no one is, nothing is negatively impacts them or any of that.
Could we push this envelope a little bit with the court system and say, judges, use this resource more often, don't let them sit, don't let them, you know, just pay a fine, let them work off and learn some skills and go through this program, can we push that envelope?
We've done that, we continue to do that.
Make that recommendation, tell me attorney Sheefelbein.
Yes, um, in my recommendations for someone, I typically will say, I'll defer a jail sentence if you're gonna do community work service, and I do usually require as part of my plea agreement that they have to serve at least twenty-four hours of community work service a week, unless they are gainfully employed or attending school.
And, and you can look at it too as the, the cost savings for jail beds, per, per diem, so if, if we're seeing STS in lieu of jail for those types of recommendations, there's additional cost savings, we can't, we don't really, we don't see that, I mean, as often as we used to ye- years ago, but it, it certainly is an additional cost savings that, you know, that, if we can keep that individuals out of the jail, that's an additional cost savings for.
So there's, there's several cost savings. So, there's, there's several cost savings that you can't show us a dollar amount, there's, there's value.
It's everywhere, yeah.
That's not showing up in a dollar figure.
Well, and the twenty dollars an hour, that's, if I caught that right, that's a flat fee. So, if you bring a crew of three persons and yourself, that's four people that you're working in a community for for twenty bucks an hour. Billing, twenty bucks an hour, that's five bucks an hour per head, that's.
See, legal.
Well, I, I think it's a good deal.
For me, I could never get by with.
Well, that's what I, that's what I'm saying, and maybe there's a, you know, opportunity, and, and when have we changed that rate? I mean, probably not in five years or something, so, I mean, maybe we need to look at little things, I mean, it's, it's small thing.
I'm just not happy with the, with the cost of this program, because of the program, it's a lot of money. And I'm gonna defend myself a little bit here, I got some phone calls, and I thought it was very clear about why I wanted to look at it. And as a commissioner, I have a duty to look at these kind of things when we're looking at spending these kind of money, I feel like we all do. We had had an appointment, or we had a meeting before, we, we have people that are needed in highway. We could pay for a person with this in highway, so this is why I'm concerned. I'm not gonna apologize for asking, but I certainly was attacked for it, which I didn't appreciate.
Well, it's unfortunate.
Very. So, um, do we have to do a two-year program here?
The way the contract is structured, you know, it's, it's a two, it's a two-year contract, I not seen one where we've done a one-year contract, but I. There is, there is an opportunity for you as a board to opt out, uh, which I would say, the recommendation would be, you would, you would, you, we would come back here. May again of, of twenty twenty-two, and you could, you could make a, a resolution to discontinue the contract. Where we can give Mary Jean an opportunity for a thirty-day, uh, layoff notice.
And Andrew, I talked to you a little bit about this the other day, cause I'm beating my head against the wall and all the time, so. Um, I think we do have to get a hold of the state, I mean, this is getting to be an expensive program, this isn't gonna end with us. You name some counties, and as I said, it isn't all about crew leader, it isn't the cases, it's also getting to be about the money. So.
Yeah, I, I think I certainly a- appreciate what Jake has recommended about taking a look at costs, it's kind of mid-year through here to see if we can adjust the, the cost of the program. I think also, um, it, it probably is worthwhile to start rattling the cages with AMC and with our legislators. About getting a, a shift in the statutory cost share.
Do the courts then take a look at this trend too, and kinda put more hours based on that they see these counties saying, okay. We're going in the wrong direction here, we're gonna have to have more court orders to have more hours out there, otherwise, counties are gonna discontinue this program. Whether it's good or not, you know, just because of the costs.
That's right, it's gonna come down to, look, like I said, we need employees that highway, we need, yeah, right.
Right, I, I mean, cause I, after talking to everybody, I know it's, the, from, uh, from looking on the outside, it's a good program. You just don't wanna get it, that number to get too far out of whack, you know, when it goes one eighteen, one oh nine, one oh three, one ninety-two. And that's the number of hours worked that we're trying to recoup, and I know there's some different tang, like you said, there's different tangible things that. Occur that are positive, but you still, that's the only thing I can look at sometimes.
Admit, you know, if you were working for the city, cause I got a call from our local mayor at six thirty in the morning. Yes, I would want a crew working for twenty dollars an hour, don't want the five people ready.
For the crew.
Right.
For the whole crew.
Of course I would, of course I would support that, but as I told him, this is a financial discussion. It's, that, that's why I brought it, I mean, obviously, we're discussing more than that, but for me, it was strictly financial, I wanted to know where the money was.
Well, and I think that's, we wanna keep it away from a financial decision. We, I, I think, the, when I'm here, and I'm just gonna speak for myself, but, um. You know, the, the crew leader makes the crew, Mary Jean, and you've exemplified that. Um, we wanna keep this away from becoming a financial decision. And let it be a good program that serves, uh, the public. Um, by trying to rehabilitate and keep some of these people from being repeat offenders and being in jail five times or six times.
Away from the financial.
No, I don't wanna be.
Saying I have a point that's an expensive program.
I want, I'd want the state to realize that it shouldn't become a financial decision for this board. It should be, it's a good program, we wanna keep the program.
From what I'm hearing out there, if this keeps up every year, there, we're not gonna be, the, people are gonna get to the point where this is too expensive of a program. And it's gonna be interesting to s- to see the participation rate next year, and what happens next year.
We realized COVID was a.
COVID was a.
You know, that, nobody.
Yes, they not changed everybody's lives.
But hopefully, we can work our way back to those.
Well, and in hindsight, in hindsight, too, we probably should have put some COVID relief funds towards this program. Because it was, it did suffer a loss because of COVID.
Which we're gonna look into, right?
Yep, absolutely, yeah, so, um, one, one of the things that we can do is, at the last meeting, I already committed that we're gonna. Uh, I'll start forwarding the quarterly reports that, that Mary Jean provides to me to the whole board, so you have a sense of exactly the work that is being done on a quarterly basis. And that, of course, is included in the packet today as well. And if the board would like, uh, and, and ultimately if the contract is approved, we can come back a year from now and give an update on these statistics. Um, I, it'll still be impacted probably by COVID, because we're not gonna be completely done come July first. But we can get a better sense of, uh, maybe how things have been trending over that three quarters.
Fiscal year, goes fiscal year. I had a question on some of the forms, in the upper left corner, it says Meeker County WS type. And then it says WS type, and there are different little numbers, like what's an ASTS? And what's a J?
Adult, adult, juvenile, WS stands for work service, it's, you know, so those are codes in our database. That kind of, yeah, so the A is adult, J is juvenile, WS is the work service, yeah, that's where all the.
And does they know crew on it too?
No, 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 no CRW, I was wondering, okay, what is that? ISTS and.
When you work for the Department of Acronyms, you.
Like, like this ISTS, everything is a zero, the, the whole page is a zero, and I thought, well, why? Why was that page even included? I didn't understand the, like, here's this adult, CWS. Everything was a zero. But, so I, I didn't, I didn't understand what, what that was all about. And was that a complete zero for the whole first three months of this year?
I, and I don't have the report in front of me to, to kind of, to clarify what that, what that is, but.
Okay.
Um, there could, there could be, is, with certain, with certain projects or certain areas that there was nothing done.
Sure.
Because, because there, you know, no crews, or, you know, very limited crews, or individual placement for those crews, so. I, I, you know, maybe you could speak more to the, the first three months.
I'll just be honest with you, there's, and I, I printed off this report, but, um, I didn't. Some of these things, I, I don't know if they apply to me, cause I, I'm, I've usually never, ever had anything in those, you know, I mean, I used to, I normally pull those out. I'll be honest with you, it was my error, it was a crew error, cause then my point is, I, my, I just haven't, when I do this report, when they, you know, I just.
I wondered if like January, February, March, there's no lawn mowing, there's, you know, you know, wood splitting, or I, I don't know what all the projects are.
Yeah.
Parks are closed.
Yeah, it, it very well could be cer- you know, certain data points that just aren't, you know, aren't met during that particular quarter or time period.
Madam Chair, if I may jump in, I have two points that I want to make sure this board is taking in consideration while they think about, um, the numbers for the next year. One, is that when we order community work service through the court, a lot of times, it's an incentive for them to be gainfully employed or go to school. So, it may not, just because it's being ordered, you may not see those numbers through the individuals. Who are being ordered to do community work service, cause they're opting to get in a job, or they're opting to go to school, so then the community work service would be waived. So, the trend of the court is to order them, doesn't necessarily mean that you're gonna see them showing up as numbers through SDS. The second item is, the trend that has been going on since I became county attorney. Is there used to be a order for most felonies to sit jail time for ninety days, sixty days. The amount of jail time that individuals are being ordered to serve has been reduced greatly. Community work service is something that we've been trying to put in place of that. However, if someone's gonna be gainfully employed or going to school, that's a preference over the sitting in jail. And so, you might see those numbers are a trend as well, and so this next year, keep that in mind when you're looking at, um, what's going on. That just because the numbers of community work service are down, doesn't mean that people aren't being ordered it.
Oh, very good.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the contract that the state has voted for the sentence to serve program, and we can review it in one year.
So, I believe the paperwork that we received is asking for.
Yeah, but he's just saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know where that.
It's, it's a two-year contract.
It would be, the contract would be through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, um, as Commissioner Johnson noted, though, as part of the motion, we could have a look back.
So, do you want us to approve it for two years, Paul, within your motion, the way that it's printed here, with review after one year? We have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll saga my own chair.
We have a motion, is there any further discussion, any questions?
I like Andrew's idea of rattling the cage in terms of this, uh, rattling any cages in terms of that, I'm sure the courts are already. Cognizant of the trend and are probably trying to push more, as more, many hours this direction as possible as is. Cause it's a discouraging trend, but it's a trend of the generation, I think, perhaps, more than anything else.
I believe too, after last Friday's meeting, that we have a pretty good friend in Representative Radel. And, um, Andrew and I and Steve were on a phone call with him, and I think, yeah, let's rattle those cages, cause those guys can get things done. And this is a statute change, so.
And that goes back, I just reiterate what I said, we don't want this to become a financial decision at county board level. Whether to, where the program, that should be, the state needs to help us out here.
Everything was positive, what we've heard about you and the program that you carry on, so this is definitely an other thing and not a personal matter. Wanted that to be clear, yeah, well done, well done. And I, I believe in this program too, teaching of skills and offering options for folks, it's, it's a good program.
I'll, I'll quote Forrest Gump, you can tell that by person's shoes.
Oh, gosh, no, no.
Did you even have to quote him?
I didn't get to, I didn't get to accent it, I'm very. No, thanks for all your hard work, you do a lot for the program, very evident.
Well, we have a motion, and it has been seconded, is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, we will take a vote, and, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Right, hmm, very good.
I, I have no report.
Andrew has no report, we flipped the page over, and we have committee updates. Any volunteer to begin, or should I begin? Andrew decided not to, not to participate.
I, I jumped the gun a little bit, trying to move us along.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Well, I'll start, I've got my notes right in front of me. Twentieth, I attended the Meeker County Extension Meeting, it was via Zoom. They talked about the SNAP program, which is a food shelf program, Farm Family of the Year updated. They were advertising for this online radio, the newspaper, local businesses. Nominations for non-traditional types of farming have become even more so than your large dairy or your large beef. Uh, now they're going organic, fruit and vegetables, small dairies, so that was, was interesting. Horticulture interests are way up, people home during the COVID, they wanted to learn how to plant things. How do I have a garden, where can I have a public garden, enjoying flowers and such. They're offering more classes, uh, 4H programs, they're doing the best they can. They have judging teams, the horse team, the dairy team, they're still competing. We're still waiting to hear about, there will be a county fair this summer. And I, that is up to the university and the local fair board, so those, those decisions will be made. U of M, U of M Extension is offering classes to people, you can always get a master gardener degree. Now, they've added a new certificate called Master Naturalist. Which focuses on environmental issues, mother nature things, so that is a new option. That was April twentieth meeting. April twenty-first, I met with the Association of Minnesota Counties, Paul was on this meeting with me, it was via Zoom. The session was called Bridging Divides, which civil discussions, making sure that when we have our, our meetings, that we are respectful. I like, they talked about be cautious of your non-verbal communication, of course, I used to teach this. You know, Paul says something, and I roll my eyes, or I go, huh, yeah, those sorts of things, we need to be, be cognizant of. They had a couple different presenters, it went for three hours, it was, it was quite a, a session. How to handle tough public meetings. They talked about something called the four Cs of trust, you must be competent, caring, consistent, and have good communication. Then they ended the day with a presentation on equity and diversity, and it all boils down to be. I'm in my book, a good listener, to be good listeners. If you have anything to add to that, Paul, that is my report.
It was good training, I mean, I've sat through that type of training several times, but it was still, um, it was still a good one. Just a couple of things, uh, you all got a, um, a link to the AMC legislative update. It's got some in- interesting information in it, uh, it's a quick read, cause it's just slides, you can see, you can see what the, the ominous budget bill's going on. And what they're looking at in there, the one that caught my eye and I immediately sent it to Andrew was, um. They are looking at a courthouse safety grant, um, if that is approved. I sure would think that some of the things we're doing around here would, uh, be applicable to that grant, so hopefully, that one will work out.
I don't wanna burst your bubble, but we got one of them a few years ago, I think it was like six thousand dollars or something, was it? Maybe they're looking at a larger one.
Well, and I think, and I, I think they've been talking about, I mean, this has been ongoing, uh, multiple years they've talked about it.
I mean, this was a really small one, but that doesn't.
It all helps.
It's, it's supported by whole houses, senate and reps, so.
Take what we can get, yeah?
CPT, uh, they're still running just about a million dollars on hand, but there's becoming a, more and more of an issue. A lot of that discussion centered around, um, an HR program. And, um, it's not working the way it's supposed to, and there's been a lack of response, uh, from CPT. Um, I think you were included on an email this morning, um, which they are really pushing the envelope on this, and they need to. So, we'll see what happens here in the very near future, uh, and how quickly they respond to the email they got this morning, but. That's the whole core of CPT, they have to respond when we have an issue.
So, what is, what is the issue?
It's the functionality of the HR program.
That we run here.
We run it too.
Yep.
So, um, now they're gonna have, next meeting, uh, a month from now, they are actually going to have a demonstration on this program. So, it could be a real interesting, uh, real interesting meeting to see.
So, are they not? But are they not following through with the technical part of the needs, I'm, I'm not following those.
That's kind of the impression that I'm getting.
So, if we call them, is that what it is, or?
Well.
I'm not just clear on what they've got to do with.
At the meeting, remember now, at the meeting, you don't have the end user. In a lot of cases, we're commissioners, we're not the end user of this, and I don't think there's a communication sometimes between CPT and that end user. And there's some type of blockage in there.
There was a major issue at the beginning of the year when, um, Flash became no longer supported and got shut down. The reporting software and the HR and the payroll functions continued to use Flash, so we couldn't run reports for, I mean, I think at least until mid-February, Corey, if you remember. And, um, it was something that was well-known, you know, it, you know, Google had put it out there for a very, very long time. And, um, it was something that was well-known, you know, it, you know, Google had put it out there for a very, very long time, that they were gonna get rid of Flash. And I think that lack of foresight is something that is causing concern, um, for, for many different counties. So, and I believe there's still some ongoing issues too, I don't know exactly what the, the issues are.
Oh, they're not addressing the issues, the, the health of.
Which is part of the problem, part of the problem is too, they're not getting the specifics they need to fix things. Now, we have the I T committee here, um, to look at what's not going right within our county, you know, what programs, and that's what we have to push up and make sure gets fixed. If C P T is our primary, um, shall we say, maintenance for those programs.
Yeah.
So.
This is a relatively new thing with C P T, and I don't know when we went three years.
Oh, I don't know how, for, oh, for the H R.
Right, and A, our H R thing, we put in maybe, yeah, so hopefully it will.
Yeah, but it, it just looks like things are maybe headed in the right way now, because the, the problem isn't just out there now, now they got some people talking about it. Which is the way you're gonna get.
I was not on that email, so if you could forward that to me, I'd appreciate it.
You were on it, you probably just haven't opened it yet.
No, I'm looking at my email right now, and I don't see it at all.
Okay, Dana, uh, Marlowe?
Uh, we'll talk about it.
Anyway, so then, Pro Works, Pro Works is like everybody else that you talk to, they're having a problem hiring, you know? And, um, without staff, some of those folks, if you've been to the Pro Works, have a great deal of need. And unfortunately, some of those folks, um, can require two of their staff at a time. And, um, not being able to hire is really limiting what they can and can't do, so, you know, they pay twelve dollars an hour, which is, but they gotta stay within, they can't afford to pay anymore. That's really, in all honesty, they can't afford to pay anymore. Now, I also understand that, uh, Andrew, you're working with them, and I find some possible work here for the folks.
Possibly, yeah, possibly.
So, uh, I was really pleased to hear that, that we're looking here to see if there's anything that we can do. Then we go to U cap, um. The general stuff is, they have a new phone system now, because they have several places, they have Hutchinson, they have Litchfield, they have Wilmer, and several places throughout their entire thing. They just put in a new phone system, so one phone call and an extension, they're gonna move you around. You don't have to have several different numbers and find the number for the Litchfield thrift store down here or anything, they'll just, you get into it, and you can go right to it. They are, um, uh. They're getting another grant that is gonna help folks who are having trouble paying their utility bills. You and I heard about that last Friday, um, because a lot of these utility companies have not been able to. Discontinue their service for non-payment. So this new grant is actually going to pay a little bit ahead for these folks, and they would actually have a balance. So that they're a little ahead on the bill, so if one month isn't working out, it's going to go forward. The second thing is, they are going to have another grant coming out, that is going to pay landlords who have not been able to collect rent. And the payment will go directly to the landlords, not to the folks who need to pay the rent, and then they go spend it on something else. So, um, that's gonna be coming up in the next couple of months. But last Friday, um, we attended that meeting, Andrew was on, Steve and I, I picked Steve up at Atwater, and we went personally to, to Wilmer. Um, we had Senator Baker, Representative Baker, Representative Erdal, um, Gina Courtney, or, not Courtney, Fortney.
Fort.
Fort. From, uh, Association of Minnesota Counties was there, she is in charge of the housing. And I thought we had just a great productive talk on this. Representative Baker realizes that we maybe need a bill for this statutory change, but with session coming to an end shortly, we don't have time for that. Another one was, um, a suggestion that we could get a waiver, or an exemption.
Exemption.
For the five homes that we're building in Meeker County to the prevailing wage. We don't know if that is truly a possibility, but it is being researched, um, to see. Then, and that was being done by Bill Glan, then, uh, Representative Erdal had said, okay, how much money do you need? If you don't get the exemption, a waiver, and you wanna get these homes built, approximately how much money is gonna be your shortfall? And, um, appears that it's about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars approximately. So he was going to look at possible one-time funding to see if he could get it attached to one of the other bills, that we could keep this rolling in Meeker County and get these five homes built. So, um, it was just a, it was a very productive meeting. Representative Erdal is very concerned about housing in Meeker County, he knows there's a shortage, and he wants to see housing. He was very, very helpful on that, and, and looks to extend and, and work at the legislature to try and help us get this moved forward, so I was really, really pleased. And also was Representative Baker, um, he said, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna write a bill, I'm gonna introduce a bill, which is where any statutory change would have to happen. However, I think that one's gonna be a tough one, and correct me if I'm wrong, guys, but, uh, going up against these union contractors and trying to get this prevailing wage. Thing changed may be difficult, because they're not gonna wanna do that.
Well, and, and Erdal made it very clear that they're just, the votes ain't there, I mean, that, um.
The interest isn't there.
He won't have the votes, one thing they did talk, and that's, uh, Representative Baker said too, that one of the other problems they have, besides the prevailing wages, the site plans. When they put in these five sites, they put it in as one site plan, that's the way they're advised to put it in.
Want a grant.
Uh, yes, and, and.
One site.
It becomes a, a site plan for five different projects, and then they're, they're kind of penalized now in hindsight by putting it in that way, so they wanna be able to. Individualize each site plan and, and put it in, but all that takes legislative change, and they're just saying enough time, number one, in the session, so that's where they came back into. Writing an exception and possibly, um, due to, because basically it's due to COVID, because the materials are so much higher. And, uh, so they're gonna try and write an exception, and that was something that Bill Glan talked about, writing an exception for this project to move these through, because they're halfway down the road.
It's ours and the ones in Lion County that are being affected by this.
Are they already in construction, or is this plant, the land?
They're, the plant, and they've only, and then what, time for eighteen months?
We have eighteen months left as of May first, to get our project.
Yeah, so if, the clock is ticking to use this funding too, if you don't use the funding, so it's, you're caught between a rock and a hard place, either, you know.
Have they broken ground on these homes?
No, no.
Haven't bought the lots yet, because they gotta make sure that they can do this.
Well, sure, where's the funding?
So they're, they're trying to, it's, it's all about that gap funding that was created because of the lumber and the, and the prevailing wage, and that's.
But hopefully, we got something rolling.
Yeah, yeah, there, Tiffany was gonna forward the information, uh, the numbers, basically, to Representative Erdal to, he said he needed them this week. To, he said that's, because they ended a session, ended a, ended a session, it's come, I mean, so he said, we got it.
You sound like a teacher.
Uh, yes.
Did you just say due date?
We're right at three o'clock, yeah.
My hair is very calm.
I got my.
Bad memories.
My, mine too.
You say singular hair?
That's all I got, I defer to that for her report.
I gotta hurry up, or I got somebody waiting to work on my P O S.
Okay.
I think I, I had the finance for, uh, public health, I hadn't talked about that, I had a Supporting Hands meeting. Their reserve is getting up there, they've got, uh, one point, almost one point four million dollars, so I think the cost of the counties is gonna go down for their share. Over a hundred thousand dollars split among all the counties. Um, and I had a, uh, Humane Society meeting, they just went over, they're looking for a van, I think I talked about that before. They're working on, uh. Grants for, doing some grants for people with, uh, who can get animals, uh, victims of domestic violence. Um, and they're working on a code of conduct, that's about all I have there, and I think they extended the hours on the weekend from noon to five, because it's a busier time. But they're still taking just appointments, and doing better, I think, with the appointments, because they got more time to concentrate on a family getting an animal. And they come in, otherwise you get a lot of visitors coming in, and so, so that's about all I have, and I'm gonna have to rush off first.
You still can't get a dog, because they haven't changed the rules on that.
Oh, I know.
You can't get a dog?
Well, I tried donating, I tried getting a donate, or a dog, you know, one of those rescue dogs, and I wasn't allowed, because I would be a unsuitable owner. So thank goodness I don't try for children. Seriously, because you can't, the dog would be an outside dog.
Was that recently?
It was, uh, well, it's three years now.
I mean, I think we have outside dogs.
They won't let you have.
They, they want, if you're trying to go through those means, yeah, so we had to just go and buy a dog, you know, it's like, oh, jeez. This dog's fat and happy, like a whole yard, eats better than some people.
That's how it is most of the time, you were at this shelter here.
No, I, I looked at Buffalo and Basso.
Everybody, yeah, everybody's got different rules, but I think if you need an outside dog, you come and talk to us, I think.
Yeah. But, uh, but, well, I had one meeting, it was Extension with, uh, Julie, and I think Turks Tree Farm were the, uh, weren't they the Farm Family of the Year this year? Turks Trees, is that what they came up with, or not?
I don't remember.
I think they were, yeah.
Has that been decided?
I thought so.
Oh.
I thought so.
Candidate, or whatever.
I thought it was they were decided, but just, you know, maybe not, maybe.
I didn't even know to that.
County fair time is usually one day.
We'll find out then.
When the hoopla is.
And then, yeah, exactly, and then, uh, I'm gonna have a budget meeting with them this week to decide McLeod and Meeker in terms of how they divvy up the, the money. Because particularly, McLeod has been paying more of it than Meeker, even though the services are equal, so it's something that we might change. And, uh, the one other thing is, I asked Andrew to get us like, or get myself a balance sheet, because I thought with three new commissioners, it'd be nice to know. Exactly what is on the books as far as Meeker County, so like, when he brought up like that property, that the real estate agent said, hey, you know, maybe you should sell this. But, um, but that's actually the more complete balance sheet I got from, uh, Bard, and it's actually the state audit of Meeker County. And, uh, if you want, you could, uh, uh, forward that to all the commissioners, because it's kind of inform, information, it knows exactly what your assets are. But it doesn't detail like different buildings and stuff, it just says infrastructure and stuff like that, because, you know.
Up in the fall, comprehensive.
It's the twenty nineteen state audit.
Yeah, yeah, and those pages I sent you came from.
That was like Exhibit Three, I think, which must be just the cash part of the county.
I know, I believe it includes, but we can, we can.
Well, when I looked through it, that's all I could find, so I have a CPA savant in my house, so she was able to look through it too with me, so. But, uh, but I think that would be nice to have for all the commissioners, just to kind of see where it is, because I was kind of, my questions were, where's the hospital lie into this whole county thing? And that was one of my questions, and it clearly says right in there, the county hospital is part of the county assets, under the business section versus the government section. So, um, that's all I have.
Yeah, I'll send, I'll send.
Bard sent it to me.
Yeah, I'll send out a copy of the audit to everyone.
Yeah, yeah, but it's in, it's kind of interesting, because then it sees, like I said, you know, otherwise I would have never known the hospital made four million in twenty nineteen, which is a pretty nice sum.
It's a, it's a fascinating document.
Yes, it is.
If you don't mind, pointing at number.
If your wife is a C P.
Yeah, that helps, you know. Especially if you're a farmer, what, what does that number mean? Yeah, exactly, what do brackets mean? But, uh, that's all I have.
Uh, I did have a whole lot of, we already talked about U cap and, uh, and most of my other things, the only other thing I had was Grove City Care Board. And, uh, they, they're pretty well vaccinated, the elderly housing there in Grove City, um, they are looking at, they're doing some of their foot care clinics, and some of that stuff has been pretty well attended. They are, uh, they haven't done any of their potlucks or things like that, but they are looking with the nicer weather now in the summer to hopefully have some picnics, a lot of. A lot of residents from the area would come to, uh, Grove City Care and have potlucks and stuff in the dining facility, and they haven't been able to do that in a year, so they were looking to, you know. Return to that, but they haven't, uh, given the stamp of approval for that yet, so they're looking to have more with the nicer weather, have more picnics, and get more of that community outreach. Which also, then in turn, going with, uh, uh, what was talked about today on board, you get a point of contact with those residents out in the country that you get nobody's seen. In a long time, and find out how they're doing in healthcare and stuff, so, so that's part of the program there. But other than that, we've already talked about everything else that I had, so that's all I've got.
Too bad.
Slim.
All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, unless there's any further discussion.
I'll, I'll entertain that, I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
All right, and we have a second?
Second.
All right, any other business that needs to come before the board at this time? We'll take a vote on adjournment, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, thank you, everyone.